Thank you. And begin with a moment of silence for the following. Patrick Quinn, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Jean Glover, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Mark Cobb, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Robert Kissamiro, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Eleanor Abalencia, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And just, just to add today, and I'm, I'm sure everybody's aware of that. It's just, I thought it would be appropriate to reference that. You know, when you, when you, when I write the date of nine 11, it doesn't mean the same thing it used to when you fill out a piece of paper anymore. And today, obviously, as I'm sure we all know, it's 22 years ago that that happened. And that's one of those events where if you're up a right, the right age, everybody remembers exactly where they were and what they were doing. And was trying to process what they were seeing. So I just wanted to mention that as we observe the moment of silence, it'd be appropriate. Sure, remember that day and the people we lost in this country. Thank you. Okay, we have a proclamation today for Maintenance and Operations Appreciation Week. I'm going to read that. "The appearance of our buildings and grounds has a significant impact on the environment for suitable learning for our students, working conditions for district employees, and as a sense of pride for our community. The Maintenance and Operations Department employees contribute to the school, family, and community by upholding professional work standards, receiving timely training, and approaching all tasks in a strong collective spirit of teamwork, which contributes to their overall work effectiveness. They exhibit diligence, patience, and professionalism in adjusting to new challenges and situations that occur in school buildings and grounds. To honor the Maintenance and Operations Department employees of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude hereby declare the week of September 11th, 2023, through September 15th, 2023, as Maintenance and Operations Appreciation Week, to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. So I declare the board recommend that action if I get a second. Second, Mr. Thorne, all in favor? Oh, and that is carried and we'll present. And of course, what an appropriate time of year because they just finished a task of getting the classrooms ready for the new school year."
Just to again acknowledge the Maintenance and Operation Unit, I have Jerry Pielletti here, and we would like to give you this recognition on behalf of your unit, and we want to thank you for all that you do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, we have some data here today. Mr. Keegan is going to present to us on tax exemptions. We're looking at three different ones, so I'm going to turn that over to you, Mr. Keegan.
Good evening. So tonight, as Mr. Farfaglia told us, we're going to talk about the property tax exemptions. And in particular, we're going to talk about three because we've had inquiries about these, and there's been some law changes. So we want to talk about the volunteer firefighter and ambulance worker's exemption, the veterans exemption, and the senior citizens exemption with limited income. So I think I broke the cardinal rule of doing a slideshow by putting way too many words on a slide, so I am going to attempt to paraphrase some of what you're going to see tonight in these slides. And I thought it made sense to just start with like the basics of exemptions. How do they work? And so in New York State, the way exemptions work is that they're established by New York State law. New York State provides the forms, guidance, and assistance to local officials, and then local taxing jurisdictions, whether it be a school district like us, cities, towns, villages, counties. They decide whether they want to adopt the exemption and any of the various options that go along with it. And one of the interesting things about exemptions, there's a lot of confusion about how they work financially. So exemptions are not subsidized by New York State. What it is, is that taxpayers in that jurisdiction say, hey, we want folks that meet this criteria, these different various criteria, to get an exemption, and we, the other taxpayers in the district, are willing to pay for it by having the tax burden or that portion thereof shifted from those folks who meet the criteria for the exemption to those that don't. And then what's interesting for us, the administration of these exemptions is, it's done at the local level, but because we're, we have three large, well-run towns that are part of our district, Cicero, Clay, and Salina, they do all the paperwork around the exemptions. So a little more detail about how they work. So what exemptions do is they exempt or reduce a portion of the assessed value of a property. And so when you reduce that assessed value, you are exempt that excess portion of the assessed value, you in effect reduce the tax on that property. And so there is one exception to this, so I want to just clarify that. We've all heard of the star exemption. That exemption is the one exemption that New York State actually pays for. New York State, when our taxpayers get a star exemption, they actually pay less taxes or, or for homes purchased in the last few years, they actually get a check from New York State. But to those folks that actually pay less taxes, New York State writes us a check for those taxes, keeping the district and the taxpayers whole. And then finally, in terms of the basic rules of exemptions, the way the local entity, the school district, adopts the, the exemption is that by local board resolution, this board has the option to adopt a resolution. So now let's talk about some of the particular ones that folks have asked about. There's always been a small firefighter ambulance worker exemption. But in 2022, they enacted some new legislation. And very, very simply, what it does is it grants up to a 10% exemption from the excess value for firefighters and ambulance service workers who meet a certain length of service and residency requirements. Again, those are options by New York State that can be prescribed by the local jurisdiction. There's also some options for like lifetime exemptions for firefighters that may have served for an extended period of time. Or if a unmarried, unremarried spouse of a deceased member wanted to, or wanted, we wanted to continue that benefit, the school district has the ability to do that again as an option. So what I tried to do is just estimate the potential impact of the firefighter and ambulance worker exemption, assuming that everybody got a 10% exemption. And so firefighters are a pretty finite population. We, we are lucky to have great relationships with our local firefighters. They spend a lot of time in our schools and in our community. And so there's about 159 as of last year's census, but we would, we would estimate that between 160 and 175 taxpayer volunteers at the nine fire departments in our district, that would be the number, 160 to 175. And if we assume they each got this 10% exemption, and, and the assessed value of their home was basically the average for their towns, it would be a tax break of between $340 and $479 per year for those properties. And again, it depends on what town they live in and the value of their home. The estimated impact to our district would be between $66,000 and $73,000 in taxes. Again, it really wouldn't affect us. It would, it would be a shift of revenues from the rest of the taxpayers. I'm sorry, the firefighters would get a break of $66,000 to $73,000 in total, and the other taxpayers would pay that. The impact, because there's so few firefighters, is pretty negligible. It would, it would increase taxes by 0.0% for non-firefighter ambulance worker taxpayers, and where it would be about 1.2 cents to 1.3 cents per $100,000 of assessed value. Any questions on the firefighter's exemption before I move on? Okay. The next exemption I wanted to talk about was the veterans exemption. This one's a little more complicated. There's a couple different versions of this. And if you think about it this way, there's folks that served, veterans that served in the military during a conflict. There's those that actually saw active duty in terms of, saw action. And the, and the third group is Cold War veterans. And as many of you know, the Cold War was an extended period of time where we weren't in an official conflict, but, but veterans served. And so I'm just going to cover these really briefly. There's this thing called the eligible funds veteran exemption. It's, it's very rarely used. It's a little, it's outdated, and it's been, it's, it's been replaced by the alternative veterans exemption. And the concept of this exemption is that veterans can receive up to 15% exempt in their, in their assessed value. And then if they served in a combat zone, they can get an additional 10%. And then God forbid, if they were disabled, they can get up to half of their disability rating, an additional exemption. There's the Cold War veterans exemption. Again, it's a 10 to 15% exemption, and if you were disabled, you can get half your disability rating. And so in an attempt to talk about the impact of this, of this exemption, we looked at the data in the county. And so there's, when we look at our tax rolls for the county, we can see that there's 2,853 properties in the district that receive a veterans exemption from the county. Those properties, we know from the tax rolls, have a assessed value of $268 million and a full value. Remember, our, our assessments aren't 100% across the board. All of our towns are below 100% right now due to where the state of the assessments are, but the full value of those properties is 601 million. So if 10% of the assessed value, or about 26 million, 26.8 million was exempt, it would lower the vex veterans taxes by about $1.1 million. And this amount would be shifted to non-veteran taxpayers. And so it would be about a half a point or a nine cent increase on a $100,000 home. If it was 15%, that would be about $40 million of value that was exempted, and it would lower the veterans taxes by about $1.7 million. And this would shift about, the shift would result in about a 3/4 of a percent increase for those non-veterans, or about 14 cents for a $100,000 home. Any questions on the veterans exemption? No? Okay, moving on to the senior citizens exemption. Now bear with me, again, this one's even more complicated just because of the sheer number of people. So the concept is that senior citizens would get an exemption if their income was below a certain level. And so, and first of all, of course, the applicant or owner of the property must be 65 or older. The way the law works is you can give an exemption for any eligible income amount up from $3,000 to $50,000 of income. And you can adopt sliding scale options. And by the way, that's what our district currently has. We currently have a sliding scale. We actually put it in place in 2007, and we projected income levels through 2009. So I'm going to say it hasn't been updated since 2009. And so currently, the income to provide a 50% property exemption is $29,000 of income. And then higher levels of income provide lower exemption amounts. So the highest level of income you can get an exemption in our district is $37,400, provides a 5% exemption. And in looking at other districts in our area, many districts have this 29,000 to 37,400 range. It's pretty, pretty typical in central New York. Let me point out one other thing really quick, too. There's, there's little options that we could include. For example, if you had a school-aged child living with you, this is not that unusual. We don't offer this currently, but say grandparents had custody of a child, they could get the exemption, additional exemption for school-aged children. There's an applicability for cooperative apartments. We currently do require an annual review, meaning the towns actually require senior citizens to prove their income. And there's some late filing criteria. So I attempted to calculate the impact of this one. And again, bear with me. So currently, there's 1,163 properties that receive our current senior citizen exemption. These properties have a full value of about $69 million. There's another 3,721 properties that receive enhanced star. That's 3,721 properties that receive enhanced star. And why am I talking about enhanced star? Because these properties, they have a, in order to receive advanced star, you got to be 65 and older, and you got to make less than $93,200. So I'm not proposing we do anything with $93,200, but it allowed me to identify another population of, of senior citizens that we could use as part of our estimate. The advanced star, enhanced star properties have a value of about 292 million. So what I'm, what I'm looking at is if we assumed that half of the enhanced star recipients earned less than $50,000, and we assumed that we were going to go to the new limits of $50,000, we're assuming that we might have as many as 1,860 additional seniors that would be impacted. And assuming that the district, again, adopts it at the $57,000, $50,000 level, and that the distribution of income over the range of exemptions is consistent with our current distribution of income. And so bear with me a second. We've got the sliding scale that goes from 27,000 or 29,000 to the $37,000. If you assume that same distribution, I did a little calculation that the new senior exemption would reallocate about $1,007,000 in taxes to our non-senior citizens. But this represents about a 30.8% increase, or 30.8 cent increase, or about a 1.66% on a $100,000 home. So if the link, income levels were lowered, the impact would be less. Again, however, it's difficult to calculate this without more information. And so the senior citizen one is a little bit tricky to, to calculate. And that, that's, that covers all three exemptions. Are there questions on the senior citizen exemption?
Make a comment. This has been something I've worried about. When you have enhanced star, they have to go to the town halls and apply for it. I know some former friends who are no longer with us, some worked for this district, knew nothing about it. It is not really publicized, so this is only a drop in the bucket of the people in our district that can get enhanced star. I've worried about this for years. So my question to you is, if we do this senior citizen exemption, does it go through the town halls?
Yes, yes, we go. Again, because we're, our towns are Class A towns, they act, that's why they administer all these exemptions on our behalf. And, and thank you for asking that question. I, I also want to point out that we don't have to, there's no, nothing that says we have to have a 50% exemption at, at $50,000. We can take our current sliding scale and adjust that. We just can't go above 50,000 to get that 50% because that's, the New York State law says it can be up to 50,000 for a 50% exemption. And remember, when New York State put that law in place, they were looking at the income across the entire state. And so senior citizens in North Syracuse probably make less than senior citizens in Nassau County, Long Island. And so they set that range up to really address everybody. And so something the board would have to, would have to consider.
Don, I just want to clarify that. So theoretically, at 50, we could do 5% like we're doing right now. And obviously, that would have, that would change the 30 cents to, let's say, 2 cents or something.
Exactly, yeah. We could, right now, our current range is to get the 50% exemption, you have to have $29,000 or less of income. If you have more, it goes from 50 and it increments until you get to $37,400, and then you get a 5% exemption. So the board could decide to just change that scale. And that's, again, completely within the, the state law. Any, any other questions or comments? No? Okay, well, well, thank you very much.
Okay, next we have our update on the Lake Shore Road Elementary School Renovation Plan Presentation. So we have the principal and Mr. Stone coming up. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. I am Tina Shimaleski, principal at Lake Shore Road Elementary. And presenting with me today is Greg Stone, Director of Elementary Education. So our purpose for our presentation today is to share our process of the Lake Shore Road Renovation Committee and where we are at with the renovation and transition plans. All right. Next slide. We're ready.
We're trying.
All right. Thank you. So as you know, on December 8th, 2021, North Syracuse Central School District voters approved three propositions for the Structured for Success initiatives, one of them being the renovation at Lake Shore Road Elementary. And we are looking at approximately 50% of the building being renovated. So part of Phase One project building is set to occur, occur summer of 2024 through fall of 2025. And as you can see, it is basically the front section of the building and one wing of classrooms. So we are really looking at a secure entry point, accessible main office areas, large group spaces, and one educational wing included in there.
So just to give a quick reminder to the board and community, as Tina pointed out, currently, Lake Shore Road Elementary, if you've been out there, you know it's one of our oldest buildings, and the entryway there is not as secure as some of our newer schools. So that's a major point of this renovation is to have a secure entryway where you enter from those front doors into another secure area like some of our newer buildings. As Tina pointed out, this will be a full renovation of the entire front half of the school. Currently, if you're looking at the school, it's also that kindergarten and first grade wing that kind of juts out the front. Some of the parts, it's not as pretty, but very important. They're going to be placing a lot of the mechanicals. Most of them are at the end of their life or have exceeded their lifespan. And so that's a major part of this renovation are the mechanicals of the school. That will enhance that indoor air quality as well as air conditioning. The other areas that are really going to be impacted, and why we're going to be talking about the relocation plan, is we're going to be doing the, like I said, that front part, that includes the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the library, the main office. It's really all of the large group areas of the building. As I mentioned, currently, that kindergarten and first grade wing, that's going to be completely renovated as well. We'll be putting fourth grade classrooms in that wing, and there's going to be a focus on 21st century, 21st century learning with some collaboration and flex space, quite a bit different than you've seen in any of our other schools. And as the design plans move along, we'll be able to present more on that. But it's really exciting to see how this is really going to become a collaborative environment where teachers and teams can share spaces interconnected. It's, it's really an interesting design and really moving us forward. Another area that I'm really excited about is our counseling suite, similar to the other newer buildings, Smith Road and Bear Road. Counseling suite will be connected to the main office, which allows a lot of interaction between the principal as well as the counseling staff there, which is really needed on a day-to-day operations. Another part that is also a really key component of this renovation is the academic intervention space or our reading room. It will be pretty much state-of-the-art and will be a model for other schools to be following in the future. And our intervention team is really excited about how that space is going to evolve into a really collaborative environment where we can break out into small groups quietly or come together in large groups in a very collaborative environment. So as I have already alluded to, it is, it was determined that during this first phase, we will need to vacate the building and relocate our staff and students to other buildings. And so we're going to talk about that coming up. A few things just to keep in mind, as we looked at options here, it's different than when we've done in some of the other buildings where we're able to move staff around and renovate the school at the same time. Given that we're taking out all those large group spaces, we're taking down a lot of the mechanicals, there's going to be even concerns with heating, asbestos, and everything else, and noise. Everyone involved felt very firmly that the best move was to relocate our students. We have some excellent options on the table and ways we're able to do so. That'll keep the continuity of our programming happening as well as have minimal impact on the instructional environment, as well as allow onsite all of our construction workers so they can get in there, get this job done, done on time so that we can, we can reopen the school in 2025.
So all that being said, we needed to develop, create a renovation committee. So the members on the committee, we have three district administration representatives. That includes Matt Irwin, Director of Facilities, Greg Stone, and myself. Classroom teachers, we have five classroom teachers, one special education teacher, one special area teacher, who is our PE teacher, one service provider. And we also have the district union rep for our teachers also on the committee. We have three parents representing children that are in kindergarten, second, and fourth grade. This was very important to us because we wanted to make sure we did have parents there whose children would be impacted in the transitions we will be talking about coming up. We also included our head custodian. He has a great perspective on building systems, and he's also going to be involved in the packing and moving of a lot of our teachers, staff, and making sure that the buildings that we will be at will be workable for our students and teachers. So the role of the committee and the members, to discuss the relocation options and provide recommendations, to review the design plans and provide feedback and recommendations to architects. to review the design plans and provide feedback and recommendations to architects. And the committee members had to attend all meetings, which are ongoing. We still have meetings scheduled once a month and to participate in dialogue and that feedback loop. So our teacher committee reps would go back and talk to teams of teachers. We have parent representatives that would communicate with the community and and our PTO. And they're also involved in a lot of the listening sessions as well. All right. So the renovation committee priorities, we really wanted to be student and family focused. It was important for us to keep our community together as much as we could. The continuity of programming and instruction for our students, looking at diverse viewpoints and considerations and making sure that we maintain the relationships that students have developed or will begin to develop during their time at Lake Shore Road. The transition planning and support, very important that we maintain transparency and communication with the community and and with the staff in our building. And we do recognize that we cannot please everyone and we do realize that some of the choices that were made will be hardships for some of our families, but it is the role of our committee to, you know, troubleshoot these issues and come up with the best possible solutions for our families, our students and staff. So looking at kindergarten, this is our youngest population. We decided it would be in their best interest to attend Cicero Elementary School, being that that is the closest school to home. They have not developed relationships with the building yet. They have not been in our buildings. Transportation will be provided for our students and they will remain with our Lake Shore Road Elementary teachers and the cohorts of children. So their classroom that they will have at Cicero will basically just be a kindergarten room implanted into Cicero Elementary. We wanted to make sure that they had a shorter bus ride and they will receive a full kindergarten program comparable to what they would receive at our building. We scoped out some areas where Lake Shore Road could occupy. We landed with St. Margaret's School in Maddie Dale. However, that could only fit three grade levels, so we made the decision for grades one through three to attend St. Margaret's with myself and the majority of my staff. The the facilities are comparable to that of Lake Shore Road, Greg, Matt Irwin, myself and my head custodian. And some of the teachers did go. We already scoped out the area to make sure that it is that it will be suitable for our students. There will be a full review by our architects, maintenance and operations, making sure that everything is brought to code for our students. It is on the same campus located, it's on the same campus as Roxborough Road Elementary School, which is still part of the North Syracuse School District. There are some minor upgrades that will be provided before our students and staff move in. Again, transportation will be provided. Greg actually did a test run. It was about three minutes further than Bear Road. And the entire facility will again be staffed by Lake Shore Road teachers, administration, our academic intervention staff, our speech therapists. So anyone that has services at Lake Shore, those services would still continue at St. Margaret's.
So the biggest decision and where we spent probably the most time having a lot of conversation was what to do with fourth grade. And we looked at every viable option within the district. A lot of conversation was spent on that, coming back to that priority of what is best for our students. Where we landed is moving fourth grade next school year to Gillette Road Middle School. So I want to talk a little bit about what that's going to look like. Transportation will be provided. When we say details are being worked out, there's a lot of logistics with this. And and one of the major concerns that's popped up, and we were aware of this from the very get go, is our our transportation, our students aren't typically riding with middle schoolers. And so, you know, we are looking at every option there is. We've actually consulted some of the other surrounding school districts. It is pretty common in many school districts to transport K six, K eight, or even K 12 altogether. So we're going to look at what those districts do to ensure that it's a successful situation for our students. We'll be engaging the community. That is one of the the biggest concerns so far that's come out of the work with our with our families. As far as the transition goes, in the building itself, what we're going to be doing is running. We will be following the middle school timeframe, so it will be an earlier start and an earlier end of the school day for those fourth graders. But they will have a full elementary experience, so they will still get the same amount of instructional minutes for ELA, math, science and social studies. They'll still get their special areas. We are going to keep them very much separated from the middle school, so they will have Lake Shore Road teachers. And we're going to house all of the classrooms in the same section of the building, so it'll be a mini pocket of fourth grade in Gillette. That'll include things like transitions. When they do transitions, they would do that together. Lunch, we'll make sure that they have lunch together, somewhat segregated from some of the other, the the older grades. Obviously, it will be in the school, but we're going to run it like an elementary school. To be honest, this is probably where a lot of the planning is going to happen now with the relocation committee. There are a lot of things for us to look at. We need to consult with parents, the community, our teachers. Really, how do we make this experience still an elementary experience for our students while they're still in the middle school? There are some bonuses to being in the middle school, and we've been talking with the PTO. So the Lake Shore Road Elementary PTO has already been in contact with the Gillette Road PTO. They've already formed a relationship. So our Lake Shore students that are fourth graders are going to get opportunities at Gillette that they may not have had. Obviously, we're going to make sure that there's their educationally and age appropriate opportunities. So they'll have some opportunities at Gillette. We're also going to make sure they're still connected to their home base of Lake Shore Road at St. Margaret's. And so they'll be invited to all of those events. And the PTO is really committed to providing them a very similar experience to what they would have in an elementary school. Is it going to be perfect? No, but I think we can do a really good job of making sure that they have a very comparable, or if not even a little bit better of an experience. It is the natural place where the students are going to go the following school year, so it is a natural transition. One less transition was really a major component of where the committee landed with this. One of the things we're going to be looking at has been brought up on several occasions. Obviously, Gillette does not have the same playground facilities as an elementary school. So those are some of the things we're going to be looking at is how can we still provide our fourth graders a similar experience? That is really a big part of the work of the committee over the next six, seven, eight months as we prepare. And so I'll be able to report more on that as we move along. But right now, this is where we're at for the planning. Some of the next steps, I've already hit on some of these, but the committee is really going to be focusing on the transition plans for all students. You know, how do we make this as smooth as possible, going back to that first priority of what's best for our students and our families? That's always at the forefront of every decision. So every time we plan something, that's what we talk through. As far as communication goes, we have created a dedicated website for the community. So that's on the Lake Shore Road homepage and on the district page, we have a FAQ for the community. So as the as the committee makes new recommendations, new decisions, new things come in, that will be continually updated. We will be sending out a newsletter at the conclusion of each committee so that the the community knows exactly what's going on. Like I said, we're going to make sure we maintain those connections with the Lake Shore Road community, PTO, and we'll be addressing transportation concerns. Also on the website, there is a dedicated email, so parents can, as they're thinking of questions or concerns, they can email it. It comes directly to my office and to Tina and I, and then we make sure it gets out to the right people. We make sure that there's a feedback loop and that we're closing that loop by getting back to people and putting on the FAQ. So there's going to be a lot more going on over the next several months and communication will be a key component of that as well as community involvement. And so that is the conclusion of our presentation. What questions do you guys have?
Questions? No, I thank you for the work. I know I followed this as it was going along and I know it's complex and some of the other models were pretty complicated and not very optimal, so I appreciate the work the committee's done. And the communication piece, as you said, that's that's really, really key, but I see you're on top of that with all those options you just put out there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Here are the comments on the public portion of the meeting. Board of Education meetings are meetings that the public is welcome to attend and observe. However, the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education welcomes your comments on matters related to the district. Period of time not to exceed 30 minutes is set aside at regular meetings of the board for the purpose of hearing comments from interested individuals. Board of Education members will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion of the meeting. Issues involving particular students or employees are not permissible topics during the public meeting. Employee or student concerns should be addressed to the superintendent of the schools during regular business hours. We go with one speaker per line. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to present his or her their remarks. There will be no more than 10 individual speakers allowed during this portion of the meeting. You cannot give or defer your time slot to another person. Our remarks must be addressed to the president of the board or presiding officer. Most questions related to the schools can be answered by responsible school official by calling during business hours. Written and questions may also be addressed to school staff, department directors, central administration or the Board of Education, and please contact our district clerk if you have any questions. So with that, we'll begin with Jessica Soulier may come up.
Good. Depression, anxiety and suicide rates are up for all youth. There are no specific groups targeted. It is like cancer. It is non discriminatory. It is both sexes, all races and all economic classes. This is why myself and others are concerned with the safety of our children while they attend our schools under your supervision. Any person, organization or school that tries to create distension and distance between a minor child and a parent or guardian is very concerning and has no place in our school system. Children's primary advocates are their parents and guardians, and that is our job. Much like once our parents start to age, we become their biggest advocates, or we should be. Instead, parents that are speaking up about their concerns for safety and well being of their children are being called domestic terrorists and extreme hate affiliates. This is slander and defamation of character and it is a crime. Who knew that parents that peacefully and respectfully want to advocate for their children's rights and safety will be looked down upon, targeted and even harassed? It is being said that if we don't affirm and agree with every single thing, we are extreme. This should be concerning to all parents. We, my family, are still standing firm that boys and girls do not belong behind closed doors together. It is not safe for anyone. Please consider if your bathrooms are safe with this not even being a factor. Ask the ones who use the bathrooms, the kids. Do you feel safe while using them? If the answer is no for many of them, you need to strongly consider why and adding more unsafe situations is a major cause of alarm. We are still standing firm that biological boys do not belong on girls' sports teams. We stand firm that any counselor or school staff who encourage, facilitate, meet my or any minor children to disobey, keep secrets, disregard and to deliberately withhold information from their parents or guardians, not be allowed to work with children. What do we teach our kids when they're when we are raising them? About safe boundaries. We tell them, any adult who tells them not to tell their mom or dad or is trying to tell them things that they know against go against their morals or beliefs, they tell us immediately and stay away from them. Those people are dangerous, is what we tell our kids. Sadly and unfortunately, it's not surprising that kids are depressed, sad, anxious and even suicidal. If they are struggling with things like sexuality or identity, instead of using school as a platform to mediate and facilitate a healthy family relationship, it is doing the opposite. Instead of telling kids, give it time, you're young, let's work through it as a family. Let's learn about other things and not make long term, permanent decisions while you're so young. Some instead are encouraging and facilitating confusion and destruction. If I was a struggling teen and I was in the position and I spoke to who I thought I was could trust and was in my best interest, and they directed me, as some kids are being directed, to withhold information from my parents, even without, even with helping me along, counseling lease specifically, without a parent knowing. Of course, along with being ashamed and confused and sad, I would feel all sorts of added things if I was deceiving my parents regardless of how good a parents they were. It's not hard, it's hard to be to be living two lives and imagine doing that as a teen while you're growing, maturing and just trying to figure things out. It's not right and things like policy 53118 are way more involved than they appear. It is not just unsafe physically, but mentally and emotionally. And I, for one, am very upset with a school trying to have that much control over my child. It takes a village to raise kids, not a public school. With all due respect, please know your role.
Thank you. David Marzullo.
That's okay. Hello, I am a town resident and president of Integrated Facility Systems. Founded it in 2002, we're a building automation contractor. Before that, I was an automation engineer with Johnson Controls for nine years and before that with Honeywell for another eight years. The trying to save the district some money, the district has been sole sourcing their building automation system for many years. And the building automation is just a small part of a capital improvement project, construction project. It's a subcontract in the mechanical scope, which is, you know, just a part of the overall construction. So we've illustrated just as recently as last year, when a district prevents competitive bidding on a building automation system and just one contract that could cost the district hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the example that we illustrated last year was an upstate school district. The scope isn't that dissimilar than the capital improvement project coming up at the high school, about the same scope. We put together a comprehensive bid. Our number was $725,000. The non-competitive bid, sole sourced vendor, his price was 1.0 nearly 1.3 million dollars on just one contract. So I'm just here tonight as a taxpayer resident of Cicero to ask the district to consider allowing competitive bids on the building automation system. To giving an example, even colleges and universities, they require at least two bidders on their systems like SUNY Cortland, St. John Fisher. You don't have to open it up to everybody, but at least open it up to another bidder to, you know, keep something like what's happening at other districts from happening here. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. And Thomas Kowalski.
In kindergarten, children learn to count two apples, five oranges. In first grade, they add them together to get seven fruit. In second grade, they subtract to get a difference of three. In third grade, they multiply and so on, until eventually they're studying fractions, decimals and logarithms. We don't teach five year olds calculus because it's too complex for them to understand. Teachers start with something very simple and then follow a very intentional systematic progression that gradually builds over time as each step lays the foundation for the next step. So when I read 5311.8, I had to ask myself, why are grown adults so concerned about the sexuality of my prepubescent child? What is the next logical step here? This policy is too well formulated to be a starting point, yet it clearly isn't extensive enough to be the final outcome either. This whole discussion of gender ideology began with the idea that somehow a woman's mind can be trapped inside a man's body and vice versa. Next, we were all encouraged to use preferred pronouns for adults out of common courtesy. Now you've passed this written policy that forces our little girls to share restrooms, locker rooms and even beds on overnight field trips with biological mans. We can only speculate what the final outcome will be. However, we don't have to guess what the next logical steps will be. If I had told you a year ago that advocates for gender ideology would be pushing puberty blockers and irreversible surgical procedures on minors, you would say I was crazy. Yet this is exactly what's happening in Washington State and California. In fact, there's cases in the court system right now to decide whether or not parental consent is required. We should not be so naive as to believe that this is not the logical step here. Schools play a more pivotal role in our society than when I was growing up. When I went to school, we got there shortly before classes began. We went to class, we went to lunch, came back to class and then we went home. And if we stayed late, it was for detention or for sports. Nowadays, schools offer pre-care, breakfast, aftercare, counseling, contraception. Some schools have clinics and childcare for teen moms and the list goes on. You may not have known where this policy was heading when you first passed it. Now that you know that the next logical steps include controversial, life altering, irreversible medical procedures on the minor students in your care, I ask you to strike down this and all similar policies that are paving the road toward this horrific end. I pray that you can all clearly see where this is headed and it frightens you as much as it frightens me. where this is headed, and it frightens you as much as it frightens me. The sexuality of our children should never be the concern of an administrator or teacher. Students' academic achievement should exclusively demand all of your time and attention. We choose to send our children to school for academic instruction, and we as parents will handle everything else in the parenting, rearing, and moral formulation of our children.
Thank you. Okay, routine action items. Look for motion or... Oh, I won't do that. Thank you, Vice President Marizio. Board of Education Committee reports, I believe. Yes, sir. We have a date.
Thank you. Yes, our first in-person policy committee meeting will be held next Tuesday, the 19th, here at the district offices.
Okay, thank you. And I know we have your legislative. Go ahead, you may.
We'll be in person also October 4th.
Okay, thank you. And superintendent's comments?
Thank you. Opening days went well. I was able to get to all 11 schools and check in with the administration and students. We had the pleasure of having Senator Mannion welcome students at Cicero L, which was a nice treat for, for all involved. The second day, we had a press conference on school safety patrols around buses. There is a concern that with the buses traveling again, that people be mindful of paying attention so they're not distracted drivers, because so many times there are distracted drivers that may pass a school bus that has their flashers on. So there was a press conference that was done on that. Had several back-to-school gatherings at many of our schools. The most recent one that on Friday was at Cicero L, but Allen Road and Carl W. Siley Bear Road was also last Friday night. Our football team won again on Friday against Corning Painted Post. Marching band came in first this Saturday at ESM. And next Saturday, we are hosting the Starburst competition for our marching band. So we are off to a very nice start. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Bowles. Any Board of Education members with comments?
I'm going to beat you to it today.
Wow. All yours.
All right, floor's mine, I guess. I just wanted to say I was at Cicero on the first day of school with the superintendent and with my colleague, Mr. Crabtree. And students seemed very happy, and it seemed like things went very smoothly. The kids were happy. And you know, there are a couple that were a little scared, as, as one would expect on the first day. But it seemed like that the staff was handling everything very well. The one thing I will say is we got to figure out the air conditioning situation there. But beyond that, it was a great start, and looking forward to seeing how everything goes.
Okay, anybody else?
Got something quick. I just want to thank Paul, Dan, and Dr. Luis Cruz for his opening day keynote. I was there with, with Paul. I don't think anyone else was able to be there. Oh, Bob, Mr. Crabtree was there. Outstanding keynote speaker. It was really great. First time we had everybody back in the auditorium since 2019. So really enthusiastic staff. I think they're going to be off to a great year. And thank you, Dan, for putting all that together.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just echo what you said. I can't say enough how, I guess, dynamic's the only word I can come up with. Dr. Cruz was, he was phenomenal. It was just phenomenal. It's all I can say. And I've seen speakers from that group before, and they're all top quality, top tier. So thank you for setting that up.
And I don't want to take credit because I was, I was pulled into a conference to see some of these wonderful speakers. And it was, I know Mr. Stone had his hands all over it. And it was one of those speakers that once you see him, you're kind of hooked. I have not seen a speaker of that caliber be able to engage so many people and have people really paying attention for the entirety of a presentation. So again, thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Okay, I will move on now to the routine action items. Look for a motion for the consideration of the minutes of August 21st. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Marizio. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that motion is carried. In a motion, please, for consideration, classification, placement of students in home instruction program as reviewed by the Committee on Special Ed. Motion from Mr. Ludden, second from Ms. Gru. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, that is carried. Discussion action items, we have Declaration of Non-marketable and Markable Surplus. If I get a motion, please, that before us. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Dr. Kramer. That is before us. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I just had one question. There was one marketable surplus that it said, we're not sure if it can work. I'm just want to make sure that if it doesn't work, we are not going to sell it, right? Can, can we just confirm that?
Yep.
All right.
That's typically what we do, correct?
Yeah. I'm still new. You gotta give me some credit here.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, thank you, and that is carried. And B, recommendation approval of contract agreement with directors bargaining unit. A motion for that. Motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Dr. Kramer. That is before us. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And a recommendation for C, the approval of the contract with the middle managers bargaining unit. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Ludden. That is before us. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And D, recommendation approved the town Cicero Special Patrol Officer and Anadog County School Resource Officer Programs. Mr. Moody Wuzik is motion, second from Dr. Kramer. Questions or concerns?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I had the privilege also to attend, sorry, Tina, every kindergarten orientation but Lake Shore. At every one of them, either the town of Cicero or Anadog County Sheriff was there, and I could see how children look up to you. And I think it makes a big difference in the safety of our schools, but also in social, emotional. I was very impressed that they were all at every one of them.
No, thank you for making that point, because it's the relationship those people have, that they build with the students and have and maintain. That's the biggest piece of that, I think. So thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that item is carried. E, please, resolution, motion for resolution E to create a 5.0 FTE teaching assistance. Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Ms. Gru. And that is at K. Carl W. Siley Bear Road Elementary, Roxborough Road, Smith Road, Roxborough Road Middle, and Cicero North Syracuse High. So that is before us. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, thank you, that is carried. Resolution to create a 1.0 FTE assistant boys modified football coach. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Ludden. That is before us. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. A resolution to create a .4 FTE special education teacher at North Syracuse Junior High. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Dr. Kramer. That's before us. Questions or comments? All in favor, posed, thank you, that is carried. H, motion, please, for the recommendation, the improvement of the agreement between North Syracuse Central School District against Central Square or Central School District. Dr. Kramer makes a motion, second from Ms. Gru. That is before us. Any questions on that? Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I think this is great. I just was wondering if maybe we could discuss, because there's some athletic programs where we don't have a ton of students, but maybe working with some of the schools in the northern area, like Central Square, maybe trying to find a way that we can do this often to make sure that our kids are getting all the athletic opportunities that they want.
So do you want to comment on that? Yeah, okay.
The one thing that is a concern of other districts, we're, we're the, we're the largest school district. So there aren't many opportunities that we don't offer. So gymnastics is one that we don't offer, and there was an opportunity where they do. But there are two different concepts that are talked about. There are combined teams, and this is not that, because one of the concerns that other districts would have, if we were to combine a team, if we had 20-year-olds try out, and that we're, we would basically overtake the other school district. So they will, they're allowing them to, to work and compete with them, but independently. So that's just a clarification there.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that.
Okay, that item is before us. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. And a motion, please, for I, consideration of the contract award bid reference for maintenance and operations equipment. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Dr. Kramer. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. Acknowledgement of a gift, motion, please, to accept that gift for the Roxborough Road Elementary PTG. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Gru. That is before us. Any questions or concerns? I guess I do have just a, my, the way I read that, that... They've given a significant amount of money, and thank you, but that doesn't go through until we have a referendum voted on.
Yeah, we'll put that in, sorry, we'll put that in a, a special fund. That's because it's designated for that project, and they understand that until the board approves a project and the voters approve it, that the money will just sit there.
And that's the way, thank you. This, I just wanted to make sure I understood that well when I read that. Thank you. Other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. Retirements, we have four to recognize. We have Karen Lambert, school secretary one, retiring with 20.1 years of service. Teresa Capellino, elementary teacher, retiring with 20 years of service. Jean Vannett, our teacher, retiring with 29 years of service. And Harold Riker, and this one blows my mind, but the number's correct, security guard retiring with 50 years of service. Yeah, so that is, wow, a big deal. And I, congratulations to those folks when those dates come up to make their retirement effective. Yeah, if you're not 50 or beyond, you don't process that, I understand. So I just, just to recognize, and again, good, good luck and happy retirement, and long, healthy retirement. Motion, please, for instructional personnel report A. Motion placed that before us. Motion from Mr. Ludden, second from Mr. Crabtree. Thank you. That is before us. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that is carried. Motion B, support staff personnel for item B. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Gru. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, and that motion is carried. And administrative personnel report C, motion placed that before us. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. That is before us. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, that is carried. Want to congratulate Anthony Puma and Daryl Redman, who are with us today. We have our new Roxborough Road Middle School Associate Principal and our Director of Fine Arts. Thank you and welcome. Okay, at this time, I'm going, I'm going to make a motion, ask for a second to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing one legal item with no action to follow. If I get a second from Ms. Gru, any discussion? Questions on that? Okay, all in favor, posed, that is carried. And a motion for meeting adjournment. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor, posed, we are adjourned at 7:02. Thank you.